Martin from the American Public Works Association, Southern California Chapter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, and of course, residents of Villa Park will humor me for a couple of minutes while we honor Mr. Collicott. My name is Steve Marvin, I'm the current president of the American Public Works Association of Southern California, and once a year, we honor and recognize members of the community, projects throughout the Southland that agencies and cities and counties have constructed. And we have one particular honor that we call the top elected official, where we find someone that not only has in their heart the ability to give back to their community and serve the community, but has something in their heart for the American Public Works Association, making civilization just that much better. So tonight, it's my honor to honor one of your own, Councilman Robert Collicott. Robert is a member of the Villa Park City Council, where he champions increased funding of infrastructure management and development of formal street, storm drain, and sanitary sewer management plans. As a councilman, he is currently a member of the California League of Cities Environmental Policy Committee, where he supports public works agency interests. Robert is a past president of the Southern California Chapter of the American Public Works Association, that's that piece of that heart we were looking for, and was recently awarded life membership from National APWA. From 1989 through 1997, he was chairman of the chapter's Water Resources Committee, which conducted a series of workshops on the emerging NPDES Stormwater Permit Program, a program we've all grown to know and love. Robert is a senior project manager and principal investigator at Alta Environmental, providing environmental policy and compliance support to public works agencies and private industry clients. In addition to assisting public works agencies and others to understand the regulatory requirements, he also founded the Stormwater Quality Task Force, which was later incorporated as the California Stormwater Quality Association, CISQA. And from us at APWA, congratulations, Robert.
Congratulations, Bob. Next, we have the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Members of the council, good evening. I'm pleased to report that Villa Park, for the month of November, again, had some pretty low crime rates, excuse me. You had eight reported crimes for the month of November, and those are as follows: you had two vehicle burglaries, one on the 1800 block of Valley Drive. A victim stated their vehicle was locked, but when they came back, there were a few items missing from inside the vehicle. Another vehicle burglary was again on the 1800 block of Martinique, where a window was smashed and a purse and wallet were taken. You had one incident of grand theft, which happened on the 1800 block of Jacquetal Avenue, where approximately $1,300 was taken from a vehicle with an unknown method of entry. You had two petty thefts, one where a woman was flagged down by a motorist saying that he hit her car, which in fact, no accident had occurred, but while she was dealing with this, it would appear that a child went into the vehicle and took some items from the car. You also had another incident of petty theft where Christmas decorations were taken from a front yard. You had two acts of vandalism, one on the 10,000 block of Hastings Drive, where a concrete block was thrown into a vehicle's windshield, and then another act of vandalism where on the 1700 block of Santiago, a window pane was shattered. You had one stolen vehicle on the 9,000 block of Via Isle Circle, a vehicle was taken from a residential driveway. It should be noted that this vehicle was unlocked, and both sets of keys were inside the vehicle, left inside of the unlocked vehicle.[274.52][274.52](laughter) With that, you had five traffic collisions for the month of November. One collision was a rear end at the intersection of Villa Park and Lemon Street. We had one collision where a vehicle collided into a stop utility truck at Santiago and Wanda. We had another collision where a motorcyclist was splitting lanes and clipped a landscaping truck. And then we had two vehicles collide at Center and Villa Park Road, no injuries in those accidents. Traffic citations are up from the previous month to 24, and parking citations remain consistent at seven. Any questions?
Any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and soon-to-be-appointed council, city staff and residents. My name is Ron Roberts, I'm one of your battalion chiefs here in the city of Villa Park. My report will be brief tonight. Over this reporting period, we had 19 calls for service. As you'd imagine, a large majority, almost 95% of that is for emergency medical services. I'm happy to announce that we had no fires of any kind, so no property loss as far as those kinds of incidents. I am happy to say that we were able to partake in the Santa Tour this last weekend, as well as the annual Villa Park Boat Parade. Always a lot of fun for our firefighters to be involved. Safety message for tonight, we're coming into the holidays, we'd like to wish you all happy holidays, please be careful, and enjoy yourselves, enjoy your family. Secondly, I'm happy to present to Mr. Rick Barnett an award of appreciation, if I may. It says, "Mr. Rick Barnett, OCFA Director from March 1st, 2012 to November 17th, 2016, for the city of Villa Park. In celebration and with sincere appreciation, the Orange County Fire Authority commends you for your dedicated leadership and commitment to the fire service. Rick, we thank you for your contributions and service as a director and as an alternate on the OCFA Board. We wish you all the best. Signed, Fire Chief Jeff Bowman." That ends my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. That's the meeting I attended last month. The primary issue we had last month was, they've just completed negotiations with the union, and we approved a new MOU for the union. There were two other items on the agenda that were carried over to this month, and one was to replace the Roberts Rules of Order with Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and some adjustments to their purchasing policy. And those are carried over to this month, which will be on this Thursday. That concludes the report for the Vector Control District. Next, we have the Orange County Sanitation District.
Yes, the last meeting was last month in November for the Orange County Sanitation District, they'll have another meeting tomorrow evening. The two big issues that were decided on the November meeting were that we did finish up all the contract work with the five different union entities and the non-representative executive staff, plus we went into a contract to purchase some other properties across Ellis Avenue to expand the administrative area and vacate the old administrative buildings they have now, which are spread over several different locations on the campus. And so it's going to make it a lot easier for them to expand, because the district is getting larger and larger, and the requirements for the treatment gaining on everyone else. So we needed to get some space, and that's what they've done. So that's my report.
Okay. The Orange County Library Advisory Board.
The Library Advisory Board did not meet last month.
Okay. Next is Budget and Finance, and the Budget and Finance Committee did meet on November the 30th, and they went over the audit report of what's called a CAFRA that's on the agenda for tonight. And they recommended, I think, about three changes to it, and it's been presented to the council tonight. Community Development and Public Safety Committee.
And the Community Development and Public Safety Committee meeting was canceled as well.
Human Resources?
The Human Resources met several times this month, and the item that we were discussing was the hiring of a new city manager, and that item is on the agenda tonight.
City Schools Advisory?
There was no meeting.
Law Enforcement Advisory?
There was no meeting.
Investment Advisory Committee had no meeting. Villa Park Community Services Foundation? No report.
That's for Rick, yeah.
Friends of the Villa-
Was the alternate on that one?
I'm the alternate, but I was not aware that Rick was in attendance. He didn't call.
Friends of Villa Park Library?
They met, and there's nothing to report.
Okay. Next is Public Comments. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-gen item within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action will be taken on the off-gen items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all communications. And I do have one here for public comment, is Donna Buxton.
Good evening, council members, city staff, and Villa Park residents. In November, our neighbor, OUSD, succeeded in passing a bond measure that they've attempted many times. Now that they'll be receiving our tax dollars and planning to upgrade Villa Park High School, I would like to suggest that our council be very proactive in monitoring the plans that they're making as they upgrade the school, and protect the interests of the neighborhoods around those schools. We still have gridlock problems around Saravilla and Serrano, and we don't need to add to the negative impacts that we've already experienced due to OUSD. On a lighter note, I do want to thank each and every one of you for your service to the city. A special thanks to Mayor Mills and Councilman Barnett as they move on from service to the city. Thank you. I'm very excited about our new council, and specifically, the addition of Vince Rascini. It's no secret that I'm a huge fan and a supporter. Villa Park's benefited greatly from his involvement in the city, and it's wonderful to see another man like those we already have, with integrity and an eye on doing the right thing. Congratulations, Vince, and to your supporters in the audience here or at home, we've reserved some space at the post to raise a glass to Vince. Thank you, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Our next item is, our first item of business tonight is the November 8th, 2016, general municipal election results. Do we have any discussion on this item? Is anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Well, do I hear a motion? Is there any further discussion? Do we hear a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the resolution.
Adopt a resolution, okay. Wait a second. I'll second it. Okay, Jared, will you call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. The motion on the floor is to adopt Resolution Number 2016-3375, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 8th, 2016, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. Councilman Collicott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Fassinelli?
Yes.
The motion carries 3-0.
Thank you. Our next item of business tonight is to give a special tribute to Councilmen Rick Barnett and Greg Mills for their dedication and four years of service on the city council. First of all, Greg, I want to say it's really been a pleasure, serving with you for the past two years. We have a couple of items here for you. One is a nice clock here, that says Greg Mills, for your service on the Villa Park City Council from 2012 to 2016. And Greg also gets to carry with him his own personal gravel that he had as mayor this year, with his name embossed on it. He gets to take that with him as well. So would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, yes, I would. Thank you, Bill. And it's been my pleasure, too, to be on the council. I've learned a lot. But before I do that, I would like to give each of you a little memento from the council, from me and my family, and Gary.
Oh, thank you.
For us, it's a little memento, and it does say Villa Park on it, so we'll get to that in a moment. But I also have one, first one, for Rick. Another person I have one for is-
We ought to put Rick's statue up here.
We'll put-[858.04][858.04](laughter) Let's do that, that's a good idea. We can put Rick's statue up here. It's like, it's pretty heavy, it's all bronze, anyway. This is for Rick. But I also like to give this to Deanna, for covering us for all these years. It takes a lot to write about the council, and you know, Villa Park is a small city, we don't have a whole lot going on, but it's our going on, and we want to make sure that that's appropriate. So I wanted to actually say a few other things, so, and I left it up here. And I do appreciate your time, Bob, because I am oftentimes coming here just in on time, so it's an improvement from when I was a younger person. But I have several things I wanted to say to everybody, including all my colleagues on the council, and of course, everyone from the fire, or in the city staff. I came from a small town, a lot smaller than Villa Park, and what I learned there, several things, folks is folks. I know that sounds kind of a hideous way to say it, but that's the way people are. And, but, it's like, you get to know everybody that you probably wouldn't really ever want to know, kind of like relatives, you got to know everybody. And what I find with all of that is I found a lot in everyone I liked. We disagree on things, but then we make a decision, and we move on. That's okay. That's the way this whole country is designed. We have our arguments, we have our disagreements, and we make a decision, we move on. That's the way things are supposed to work. The other thing I learned, when you make a mistake, own up to it, be honest. One thing that came up a couple of months ago at a meeting, I made a statement about being duped. And I was on the LEAC committee with Bob, and we had a certain situation where we had information that wasn't quite true, and I, for one, was very upset about this particular situation. It didn't turn out to be quite right, the way it was described, and we made some aggressive moves, I would say, and Richard Mird told me that he thought that I was saying that the LEAC committee duped me, that is not the case. I was duped into, for lack of a better term, by the evidence that I had, and it turned out not to be correct. And we corrected that mistake, so again, own up to your mistakes and go from there. I was very happy to serve the city of Villa Park for three years on the Vector Control Board, which Bill serves on now. It's a great organization. I didn't get a golden mosquito, but it's a very good organization, very professional, and they do a great job of keeping the mosquitoes and the different types of vectors, which includes, you know, raccoons, and rats, and all sorts of other type of vermin, under control. That helps us keep fleas and mosquitoes and other types of insects, and it keeps us healthy here overall. Also, I was very fortunate to be on the sanitation district for the past two years. Bob is very familiar with the sanitation, and both Bob and Deanna have been alternates during the last two years. The good thing about that is I learned, again, about a lot of things that you wouldn't want to know.[1059.04][1059.04](laughter) Same with work, being on the city council, it's an education, if you don't understand, you go, "Well, why did they do it that way?" Well, Jared is the keeper of all the ways, and then, of course, Todd will correct us when we're wrong. And that's the way it's designed to work. And also, I will have to say that I had two gentlemen counsel me this time last year when I became mayor, and it was Wayne Solzell and Jim Riker. We had a nice long talk about how things should be working and how things should appear. I thank you gentlemen both. I'd also like to thank Brad Reese for being on this council with me for his two years, and also Deborah Polling. I sat next to Deborah for two years, and we talked a lot. And all of us have, I would say, probably 90% in agreement. There's a 10% of things that go on, but, again, that goes back to the way the whole country was designed. I also want to thank Rick Barnett. His logic is above none, but sometimes it takes a little while.[1124.73][1124.73](laughter) Then I'd also like to thank Deanna. Deanna is the most prepared person that I know, and so I really thank you for all that you do, and also pointing out things that I'm misinformed on. And I'd like to say this thing for Bob and Bill, I have a very good working relationship with everybody, and we appreciate and respect each other, and that's what I like to impart to everyone here, that I appreciate all this, and people being honest and coming up. The best thing about being on this diocese, folks coming up here and hearing out their concerns. That's what it's all about. This is Little America, that's what we're supposed to do. I'd also like to thank, immensely, Jared Kilbrant. We both grew up a little bit the last four years, and I appreciate your keeping us in line. It's a rough job, because we all have different ideas on how things are supposed to roll, but Jared and Todd keep us in line, and we really appreciate it a lot. I'd also like to thank Michelle for keeping the number straight. That's a tough job. Most of all, I'd like to thank my wife, Andy, my daughter, having to be putting up with all the time that I spent here, in all different committees, and missing dinners, missing meetings, missing performances, and I really appreciate that whole part. So thank you, thank you very much, love you both. Thank you.[1216.43][1216.43](applause) Some other things I'd like to leave out here. From Vector, and I've got another one here from the sanitation district, these are nice things to have, put on my wall somewhere, if Andy lessens them on the wall.[1236.16][1236.16](laughter) And then I also had a nice proclamation from John Morlock, as mayor, so I really appreciate that. I hope I've been a very decent council member and a decent mayor. Bill, again, thank you very much.[1251.16][1251.16](applause)
Deanna, would you and Bob like to make comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words. Four years ago, when I got on this council with Greg and with Bill, with Barnett, excuse me, I didn't really know them. I knew of Greg from being in the Dad's Club, I knew his wife briefly from her being the PTA president over at the elementary school, and I met Rick from being in the 50th anniversary play for the city of Villa Park, which all three of us were in, and we sang and danced, and I still apologize for all of that, because we didn't do that well, but we certainly had a good time, and we did get to know each other. For the last four years, I've gotten to know them, their family, their children. They have grown. Barnett has seen his daughters get married, he's become a grandfather. He has educated himself in the pension system. He has educated us in the pension system. He has gone after OCFA with a passion, if you will, and he means well. He means well when he does that, and he means to do a lot of good for the city. It's disappointing that he did not want to continue, but I understand that. Greg, you and your family have certainly become friends to our family, and we appreciate that. I don't know if the public knows how much his family volunteers in this community, as well as others. Greg volunteers in the Rotary, he serves people with Meals on Wheels weekly, his wife does also. They donate their time, they donate their money, their daughter also serves the community, and the list can go on for what they do. And he's not one to tell you what he does, but I want to make sure that everybody understands how much time he actually put in to volunteering for people in need, and he put his time in here to the city, and for that, I thank you. And I will miss you. We have done a lot of events here, we've gone to all the parades, we've gone to all of the movie nights, we've gone to all of the concerts in the park, we have cooked, we have gone to the picnics that have changed over the years, and are not going to be at the lake anymore, because there isn't a lake to have them at. So we've done a lot of community events. I encourage our existing councilmen and our new councilmen to follow in those footsteps. There's a lot of things that are community-oriented that I think that we need to step up on and participate in, because we're losing two people who really did participate in that. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, since Rick's not here, I'll talk about him first. I first met Rick when both of our sons were in Troop 850, the Boy Scout troop here in Villa Park, and it just happened that my son, Harry, and his son, Steve, got to be good buddies, and basically hung out together a lot. And Steve was a neat kid, and enjoyed getting to know him, and getting to know Rick a little bit as well. When I was a candidate for city council, Rick raised the issue of law enforcement, the need to try to enhance our law enforcement, and I think that raised the discussion throughout the community, and led to some of our actions to try to get more community involvement in law enforcement, and I think we've seen the benefits from all that by some of our, by the reduced crime rates that we've had in Villa Park. Although they were always very low, they've improved over that time, and also, our Neighborhood Watch has grown tremendously, it's, I think, tripled in size just in the past couple of years. So for that, I think, thank Rick Barnett. And also, as mentioned by Diana, Rick really raised the issue about the unfunded pension liability, and for the past couple of years, that's been a big issue, not just here in Villa Park, but statewide, and I think that Rick has gotten some attention statewide from some of his leadership on that particular issue. Greg, I've really enjoyed working with you. You've always got a very positive attitude and a good sense of humor, and, you know, I'm going to miss seeing you here at council. Anyway, I'd like to thank both these guys for the time with them, or with us, and good luck on the Serrano Water District. Water is my professional background, so I'm kind of envious that he gets to do that and I don't, but maybe I'll follow you at some point.
Is anyone from the public that would like to make comments regarding Mayor Mills?
I'm Jim Riker, former councilman from a long, long, long time ago. I'd like to thank Greg for his services to the city. And when Greg became mayor, it was kind of exciting times around here for a while, and I'd like to congratulate him and do an excellent job in keeping peace in the family. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, members of City Council. My name is Vincent, I'm here with the Office of Congresswoman Walters, and, you know, we also wanted to come by and also present, you know, a small token of appreciation for all the work that you've done, Councilmember Mills. So I've brought along here a certificate of recognition for yourself, as well as one for Rick Barnett, that we'll go ahead and leave here for him. But I just wanted to go ahead and, you know, read this, just read this quick excerpt out for you. It says, "The certificate of special congressional recognition is presented to Greg Mills in recognition of your service on the Villa Park City Council. Your dedication to your community has been inspiring, and your residents are privileged to have had you as a local leader." So, as I said, we just want to present this recognition to you, and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
And I will go ahead and leave the certificate for Rick Barnett over here. And last but not least, in commemoration of Jared's last city council member, we also did bring a certificate of recognition for you, you know, to commemorate your 10 years of service to the city of Villa Park, starting as an intern back in 2006, I believe it was, right? Yes, we, you know, we also went ahead and brought you a certificate of recognition as And thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
I have some comments that Rick has sent in.
Yes, we'll go to that.
Hi, I'm Wayne Solzell, also an ancient council member and mayor. I want to thank Greg, first you. I think that your calm demeanor, your ability to lead, was demonstrated very well in the Rotary during the years I've been there, and I want to thank you for your objectivity and your fairness throughout the meetings you've attended, in LEAC meeting, and your observations and rational conclusions, very logical and subjective, no one has disagreed with you, to my knowledge. That's quite an interesting consensus. I mean in LEAC. There have been other disagreements, but thank you, Greg. It takes a lot of time to serve nonprofit organizations generously. It's easy to get on the board or to even lead one, and you get the title, but if you don't work hard at it, you can't achieve the objectives, and you have strived to do that, and we appreciate you. And I want to also thank Rick, I wish he was here in person, because I like eye contact when I say "thank you." But Rick has also, Rick and I have had controversies through the years, when he served on council. I think Rick was the longest-serving appointed member of council- I think Rick was the longest-serving appointed member of council that was never, never had to be elected. I wish I could have had that spot, because elections are a great tell it all. It's a time when you have to meet the people and explain why you want to serve, and when you don't do that, it's hard to serve well. But Rick did serve well, and Rick has a lot of integrity, and he's got a lot of verve and commitment to the job. His concerns over the financial situations, particularly in the state, as well as the fire authority and others, is genuine. He's very concerned. I think we will see in the next 12 months why. I believe we're going to see with rising interest rates, the dynamics of what compound interest has to do with liabilities, as we've seen already in the purse system with $273 million of unfunded liability. Rick is very concerned about that, and I'll bet he'll continue to do it whether he's appointed or elected, but he will serve as a spokesman for the concern on the behalf of the citizens. So, my thanks to Rick for that, and also for his generous service to our community. And I'd like to also add a thanks to Jared. Jared, I've enjoyed coming into your office and learning so much of what's going on, and even some stuff that, knowing better than to speak to other people about it, you have been confided in me, and I've appreciated that, and gotten a better understanding of what the real issues were versus the hearsay we hear in the community. That's made us more effective as Neighborhood Watch coordinators, and we've been able to tackle the issues head-on. So, thank you for your service as well, and good luck in La Habra Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else for Mills? Come on up.
Good evening, Brad Reese. I've lived in three cities in my life, and this has been my favorite. Been here 20 years, I love this city. And I just wanted to come up and say thank you to Greg. Greg, you've done a great job. As most of you know, I was an ex sitting up there as well, so I know what it's like. Lot of good years, and you've done awesome. Thank you so much for your service. Of course, Rick isn't here. Well, one thing back on you, Greg, you took over sanitation when I got off, and that was certainly a fun post. I learned so much down there, and, like you said, it's stuff that you kind of don't need to know, but it's really interesting, and I really enjoyed that. As far as Rick goes, want to thank Rick, wish he was here as well. Rick took over the fire authority when I left, of course. Ron, how are you, man? So, I, you know, I fought one type of fight, Rick fought another type of fight, and it's been interesting. And I just thank you two for serving, and I also want to thank Robbie, up and coming, and Vince, thank you guys. It's so neat to love our city and be able to come up and serve and learn more about our city. I'm just, just so proud of you all, every one of you. I thank you all for your service. Jared, of course, you're out of here soon. I've enjoyed working with you all the years. We're going to miss you, there's definitely some shoes to fill, be interesting to see, but you've been awesome, and I wish, wish you the best of luck. Thank you all.
Anyone else? If not, I understand that Councilman Barnett left some remarks, maybe from Deanna, Jared, both?
All right. They were emailed to Jared and said, "I would like to thank the residents of Villa Park for allowing me to represent them for the last four and a half years. Villa Park is a community-oriented and physically responsible city that has been a pleasure to serve. I thank the new council members for volunteering and wish them success in preserving our great city. I'd like to thank our departing city manager for his devoted service for many years, I wish him well in his new position. Finally, I want to welcome our new city manager and let her know that she has as much support from council and staff. My absence from this meeting was unavoidable, however, I'm there in spirit and wishing all of Villa Park a very peaceful and happy holiday season." Rick.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words about?
You know, Rick made me laugh. The one thing about Rick is we would, no matter what would happen up here, and we disagreed a lot, we would walk out those doors and he'd look at me and say, "You going to talk to me?" And I would say, "Yes, tomorrow."[894.51][894.51](laughter) And the next day, I always talked to him, because that's how you do it. When you walk out the door, you have to become normal again, and you have to talk to people, and you have to like people. When, one of the first controversies that we had on this council, and Brad was here at the time, was putting fireworks back on the agenda to make fireworks legal in this city. And as everyone remembers, that was a big booming issue in the city. We had meetings till 2:00 in the morning, meetings till 1:30 in the morning. I mean, it just had never happened here, and it was all about fireworks. And he still made me laugh, after being here at 2:00 in the morning at a very controversial meeting, and, and it was overflow in this room. The next day, I came home to a bench that had a brown, unmarked paper box on it with no seals, completely sealed, and no markings on it whatsoever. And I picked up the box, I looked at it, and I put it back down, and my good sense that, oh my gosh, what has happened? So, I don't call the sheriff, I don't call the fire, but I called Rick. And his response to me was, "Oh, don't worry, it's probably just a resident put a bunch of poop in it and wrapped it up, it's fine because of the movie, because of our meeting the night before." And we laughed, we laughed, it was funny. Three hours later, after the bomb squad came, we still laughed. And fireworks did get approved, and it's been a great addition back to this city. And I credit him with that, he put that on the agenda with Brad, and it was a fight to put that on, but he certainly is a fighter for the city when he believes in something, whether it be pension, whether it be issues with the fire authority, or whether it be wanting to put fireworks back on. He certainly had a passion for the city, and he fought for it, so it will, it will be missed.
Bob, you have any comments?
No for the comments, no.
Any comments, additional comments from the public for Councilman Barnett? If not, we will move on then. Now, we'll administer the oath of office and seat our new council members. Mr. City Clerk, will you please take over?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would like to invite the council members individually to the center of the room for the swearing-in ceremony. First, we would like to invite Councilmember-elect Robbie Pitts and his wife, Elizabeth, who will administer the oath of office.
This is our son, Josh, a lot of people know him, he was able to come in. Okay. Hi, Robbie Pitts III.
Hi, Robert Pitts III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will, that I will defend and support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Of which I'm about to enter.[1128.33][1128.33](applause) Mrs. Speaker, you put up with it.[1142.13][1142.13](laughter)
While Robbie's taking a seat.[1150.01][1150.01](laughter) It's go time.[1154.13][1154.13](laughter)
That was the whole reason.
We would like to invite Councilmember-elect Vince Rossini and his wife, Laura.[1164.33][1164.33](applause)
I.
I, Vincent Rossini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will discharge the duties that I am.
Upon which.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Yes.[1262.01][1262.01](applause)
As my last order of business as Mayor Protem, I welcome comments from our newly-elected council members.
Robbie first? Well, I'd, I'd like to say that this is a, an extremely humbling experience for me, and I want to thank all the people who supported me through this campaign, giving me this opportunity to serve the community more than I, more than ever. I mean, I've been a part of this community for 17 years now, love living, I'm like Brad, I really love living here. I come from a small town back in Virginia, and this reminds me so much of where I grew up, and I really do appreciate the people that live here, I appreciate the, the environment that this city creates for all of us, especially for our young people. It was so touching to ride the fire truck this past weekend and see all the young children come out and sit on Santa's knee, and it's just, it's, it's overwhelming, the emotion to, to really experience something like that, and I really appreciate this, this wonderful opportunity. I look forward to serving with all of you, and thank everyone in the City of Villa Park for your support.[1343.15][1343.15](applause)
I've been blessed to serve the State of California for the last 12 years, and beginning a new chapter in my life, and I want to thank my supporters here in the audience, my supporters at home, 1,769 people that believed in me, and, and those that had questions, that had reservations, because they were part of the process, they took time to answer the door. And I think many of those I was able to convince. I really look forward to serving each and every one of, every resident in Villa Park, and working with our neighbors, trying to make Villa Park the best place it can be, following some incredible footsteps, folks here on council, folks that served on council in the past, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for reaching out and being a part of the process. God bless you, happy holidays, Merry Christmas.[1405.26][1405.26](applause)
Thank you. I'll now declare the offices of Mayor and Mayor Protem vacant, and we'll now discuss the election of Mayor and Mayor Protem by the City Council. Jared, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem and council members. At this time, following our historical procedures outlined in the staff report, we will conduct the election for Mayor and Mayor Protem. The offices of Mayor and Mayor Protem are vacant, and at this time, I will accept nominations for the office of Mayor.
I would like to, it is my pleasure and distinct honor to nominate Councilman Bill Nelson as Mayor of Villa Park. Bill is well-qualified to lead our city. He's, Bill has a Master's in Business Administration from USC, something that I will accept, but (laughter) not a USC fan, but I guess I'm outnumbered here. Anyway, he's, has his MBA from USC, and he's got a long and distinguished career in management with Fortune 500 companies. Bill's also a member of the Orange County Cemetery District, and in 2016 was, has been the President of the California Special Districts Association. For those who view, that are not familiar with that organization, it's kind of the equivalent of the League of Cities, only for special districts such as the Toronto Water District, Metropolitan Water District, and over 1,000 other special districts throughout California of all types. Bill was elected to our council in 2014 and will make an outstanding leader to our council and our city. So, with that, I'd like to nominate Bill Nelson.
I'd like to second that.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we will take a roll-call vote to nominate Councilman Nelson as Mayor. Councilman Colacott.
Aye.
Councilman Rossini.
Aye.
Councilman Pitts.
Aye.
Councilman Fassinelli.
No.
Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Motion carries, four to one. Congratulations.[1536.83][1536.83](applause)
Our fellow councilmen, thanks so much for this great honor. I'll try to be the best mayor that you've ever had, and Bobby is outnumbered up here, both Vince and I are Trojans, so we'll keep him in line.[1554.76][1554.76](laughter)
Zot.
As my first order of business, Mayor, I will conduct the election of Mayor Protem. I'm now accepting nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Deanna Fassinelli, Deanna Fassinelli for this position. I've been very fortunate to, to serve in various community events with, with Deanna throughout, and I really do appreciate all the support she gives this community. I know Greg Mills set a high bar for all of us for community service here, but I think Deanna exemplifies that in her efforts to, to support our community and so forth.
Do I hear any more nominations?
It gives me great honor to nominate Robert Colacott.
Any additional nominations? If not, we will start with the first nomination, we'll vote on the first nomination. So, please take a.
This is a roll-call vote for the nomination of Councilman Fassinelli as Mayor Protem. Councilman Colacott.
No.
Mayor Nelson.
No.
Councilman Rossini.
No.
Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Councilman Fassinelli.
Yes.
The motion fails, two to three. The second motion is for Councilman Colacott as Mayor Protem. Councilman Fassinelli.
No.
Councilman Pitts.
No.
Councilman Rossini.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
The motion carries, three to two. Congratulations, Bob.[1651.86][1651.86](applause)
Mayor Protem Colacott, do you have any comments?
I'd like to thank the, the council for this opportunity, and I'll do everything I can to support the, our city and help us to enhance our already wonderful community. When I was campaigning for City Council, everybody told me that they wanted to keep Villa Park just like it is, and that's my objective, but I think we can, there are some things that we can improve, like we can improve our streets and help keep reducing our crime rate, and I'll do everything I possibly can to help make Council, or Mayor Nelson's term as our mayor the, the best ever. Thank you very much.
Our first hearing is review to waive reading in the full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or staff on this? Is anyone here to speak on, on the hearing from the public? If not, is the councilman, is there any discussion? Or do I hear a motion to the staff recommendation?
With the reading, I'll, I'll move that we waive the reading in the full of all ordinances.
Second.
Then moved in second.
A voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Our next hearing is the 2013-2021 Housing Element Update and Related Implementation Actions, General Management Plan Amendment Number 2601, and Zone and Code Amendments. Councilmen, do you have any questions or staff?
Right this time.
Before we jump into that, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring up our consultant John Douglas to provide, and the community with just a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Walk you through the process and how we've arrived at this point.
Mayor and council, good evening. I'd like to just give a brief presentation with some background on the housing element. Mayor and council, good evening. I'd like to just give a brief presentation with some background on the housing element.
I'll turn around. I'm going to turn around here. Is that better?
I'll try to jump in.
Sure. This housing element is a part of your general plan, and it's required by state law, and the theme through, through this item, this discussion tonight, is direction from the state. Everything that we're doing and we're going to be discussing and following through with this housing element is a result of what state law requires of every city in California. And I see we're starting to get some slides up there. The housing element, let's go to the next one, Jared. The housing element is one of the components of your general plan, and it is required by the state to be updated every eight years, and so this document that's in front of you covers the period 2013 to 2021. Every city within Southern California is required to do this housing element update for this time period. The housing element has lengthy legal requirements in state law, itemizing the things that cities must do, that they must analyze, what they must follow through with policies and programs and so forth. And one of the most important things about this housing element is that the state legislature has delegated authority to the State Department of Housing and Community Development to review your housing element and issue its opinion as to whether it complies with state law. It's the only aspect of the city's general plan and land use regulations that has that level of state involvement. And this is a very important requirement. If the state issues a letter saying that the city's housing element complies with state law, that's referred to as certification, and that certification is very important for a number of reasons, most notably that it helps to ensure your council's local control of land use. It also helps to enhance the city's eligibility for grant funds that may become available. Next slide, Jared. So, in compliance with state law, the city prepared a draft of a housing element back in 2013, and pursuant to the requirements of state law, submitted that draft to the state for its review. The state sent back to the city a letter itemizing some revisions that they believe was required in order to fully comply with the requirements of state law. And so, over the last several months and, and year, the city has prepared revisions responding to that direction that the state sent us in their review letter, and we submitted a revised housing element to the state. That revised housing element was reviewed by the City Council several months ago, was subject of a public hearing. The state reviewed the revised housing element and found that the revisions that are reflected in that document would fully comply with the requirements of state law and would lead to the certification of the housing element if it's adopted and implemented. Next slide. The key requirements that are reflected in the housing element, this is a fairly lengthy document, but what I believe are the most important issues in there. Number one, that the city must have in its zoning ordinance, be able to accommodate the needs of, the housing needs of persons of all economic levels, and this is a statewide requirement. And the second is that the city's zoning regulations are adequately facilitating the needs of persons with special needs, such as the elderly and persons with disabilities and so forth. So, I believe those are the two most important things that are reflected in this document. Next slide. The, the process by which cities are allocated a share of housing need, housing growth need over the, this eight-year period, is referred to as the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or ARENA. And this is the process by which the state's growth needs for housing are allocated to regions and counties and individual cities. And so, at the end of this process, each city is assigned a set of numbers that they must accommodate through their inventory of developable land and through their zoning regulations. And so, the city, through its housing element, must demonstrate that it has the capacity to accommodate its assigned share of need. I would like to emphasize that this doesn't mean, this is not a mandate for the city to issue building permits or go out and build housing. It's a mandate that the city plan for its designated amount of housing growth. And at the bottom of the slide there, you see the numbers that have been assigned to the City of Villa Park for this planning period by income category. State law mandates that cities plan different portions of the city that could accommodate housing at different levels. And so, the numbers you see there, a total of nineteen housing units is Villa Park's share of the state's housing need during this eight-year period. Next slide. The city went through an analysis to identify what parcels are available that could accommodate the housing needs of the various income levels in the community, and as everyone knows, Villa Park is a low-density community, and state law mandates that higher-density housing be allowed in order to accommodate the lower-income segments. And again, I want to emphasize that this is a requirement to plan for the possibility of development. It doesn't mandate that that development occur. So, the, the analysis showed that there was not sufficient land with the appropriate zoning, as determined by the state, to accommodate the lowest income levels. And so, state law requires that when that's the situation, cities must amend their zoning regulations in order to accommodate that development. And so, what is proposed in the housing element, and what has been accepted by HCD as an appropriate response to this situation, is to amend the CP zone, which is where we are sitting right now, City Hall, the library, and the office building next door. That's, that's the extent of the CP zone in Villa Park, to amend the regulations to allow multifamily housing or mixed use, that is, commercial and residential together in the same project. To amend the zoning regulations to allow that to happen. It's not a mandate that that development occur, but simply that the regulations are in place where that type of development could happen. The second key aspect of the housing element is to amend the city's zoning regulations to accommodate persons with special needs. And in particular, there's a state law that requires cities to allow what's referred to as transitional and supportive housing according to the very same regulations and procedures that apply to other conventional types of housing. Transitional supportive housing are intended for persons with extremely low incomes or with disabilities, such as mental disabilities, physical disabilities, the elderly, and so forth, with special housing that's designed to accommodate the needs of those folks. The second amendment to the city's regulations has to do with reasonable accommodation. This refers to making adjustments or accommodations in the rules and procedures that apply when a person with a disability needs some, some variation or modification in the, in the rules in order to accommodate their disability. A common example is a wheelchair ramp that might be in a front yard setback that might otherwise not be permitted. So, these are, I want to emphasize that these rules apply to every jurisdiction in the state, and the state requires that cities amend their local regulations to accommodate these requirements in order to fully comply with state law. So, the next steps in this process, tonight is a public hearing to review and take action on the draft of the housing element document that's before you tonight. There are two resolutions that are proposed. One is a resolution to adopt this housing element draft, and the second is a resolution to approve an amendment to the land use element of your general plan related to this CP zone, the parcels that I mentioned previously, City Hall, the library, and the office building, to be in sync with the zoning amendments that are required in order to fully comply with the law. The, those resolutions are in front of you for action tonight, and then also before you tonight is an action to introduce an amendment to your zoning regulations, first reading and introduction, and then that, if introduced, that would come back at, at your public hearing in January for final consideration, second reading and approval. If the city approves these things that are before you, then that action would be sent up to the state for its final review, and then if they find that we've dotted all the T's, dotted all the I's, crossed all the T's, then they will send us a letter back saying that our housing element is now in full compliance with state law. And the next step in this process would be what's referred to as a midterm review next year to report to the state how the city is doing to implement the, the programs that are set forth in this document. So, that concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
John, most of us moved here to Villa Park because we prefer low, low density. And that's what's unique about Villa Park, and that's certainly something that I think all of us want to preserve as much as we can. However, we have this mandate from the state that we do have to provide high-density zoning. It's not something that we do willingly, but there's a, there is a hammer there. Can you describe, you know, you described that what we're trying to seek is certification, and can you describe what the potential outcomes could be if we do not get certification, and we do not adopt such a housing element?
Yes, and I would invite the city attorney to jump in because we get into legal territory here as well. When a city does not have certification of its housing element, it could act as an incentive for folks to challenge the city in court, to, to bring an action. In fact, the City of Fullerton was sued just a couple of years ago on their housing element, and it's, it's quite expensive and cumbersome to defend those kinds of lawsuits. It doesn't happen very often, but it's happened several times even here in Orange County. Mission Viejo was sued about ten years ago. And so, the best way to defend against those kinds of challenges is to have the state's blessing of the housing element. Worst-case scenario is that if the city were sued and it were found by a court to not be in compliance with state law, courts can actually order cities to rezone land and issue building permits for high-density housing.
And the, the courts can actually identify the parcels and say, this is where we're going to put the high-density housing, and irrespective of any concerns that the city may have, correct?
Yes.
So, it's, it's a real significant hammer that we're trying to defend against.
It is.
Any further questions from?
In 2013, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we rezone the property with a, you know, a conditional use permit? So, this property since 2013 already had been approved
Yes.
for multi-housing already. It's not, anyone could have done it with a conditional use permit. But it was denied when we sent it up the first time, correct?
You're absolutely right, that the city did make that amendment to its zoning regulations, but there, there were some technicalities in the law that didn't square with that zoning amendment, and so, the state said, oh, but you, you didn't do this and this and this, and so, now we're proposing to make those minor corrections.
Okay, and so, when we make these corrections, will a CUP still be required, or is it by right that could do it?
By, by, the state law requires that it be allowed by right.
By right, the owner of the building next door, by right would be able to have multi-use.
It would be a simpler review process that does not involve a conditional use permit, right? State law.
I understand.
So, let me jump in that a little bit. So, obviously, this planning cycle's been on since 2013. Our direction in, in align with Mayor Protem Colacott's statements are, is to keep the city as low-density as possible. So, our mandate has been to attempt to work with the state in every fashion we could to, to safeguard that. Rightfully or wrongfully, good or bad, Villa Park is still part of the State of California, right? So, these requirements are something we have to comply with at the end of the day. Worst-case scenario, I mean, you mentioned some cities have been sued. Huntington Beach was just sued six months ago, I believe it was, maybe a little bit longer. If somebody was to come find us, now, the likelihood is probably not great because Villa Park is not a fertile area where there's going to be a lot of low-income housing. It often doesn't pencil out. But if somebody were to come and want to build affordable housing in the city, and we did not allow it in compliance with state law, we could lose, for example, the ability to issue building permits. So, if somebody wanted to do a kitchen remodel, we couldn't issue them a permit if a judge took away our authority to do that, or to make improvements to your house. So, it's something, in one sense, we have to kowtow to the state's requirements, but it's also a response to try to keep as much local control as possible by meeting those requirements. So, it's a little bit of a double-edged sword, and that's why frankly, it's taken us a couple of years going back and forth with the state to try and do as much as we could to, to maintain as much local control as we could.
Any additional questions? If not, is anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. Congratulations, guys, for your, your new positions. My name is Dr. William Langstaff. I've been in this building next door for the last forty years, since 1975. And my question to you, sir, is if this is passed, will there be a requirement to, to make this happen, or will it just kind of be filed?
Absolutely not. So, you as a property owner lose no rights. You are vested in all of your current land uses and property rights. There's no requirement that you build or do anything.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not an owner. I'm a rentee, so.
Rentee, well, it's up to the property owner. So, the person who owns the property.
I don't think they're even in the country, but that's all right.
It's up to the property owner, right? So, what we were talking about, all this does is put a framework in place. It doesn't guarantee anything's going to change. That comes from economic forces and people who want to redevelop their property, right? So, it doesn't mandate a change. It doesn't require a change. By merely changing the zoning to allow it to happen if a property owner wants to do that, that's compliance with the law.
Makes Uncle Jerry happy?
Probably best that I don't talk about Uncle Jerry.
Oh, well, sorry.
Yeah, because he's listening. He's always listening.
I know. He's always there. That's true.
So, there shouldn't be any changes, well, there can't be any changes without the property owner's consent.
Right. Okay. One last comment. Jared, thank you for your service, sir. Good luck to you in the future.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Speaking, speaking to this issue, I am again Wayne Szelzell, resident. I am a counselor of real estate. I have a retired member of the Appraisal Institute. I have served as expert witness in both state and federal courts. I would like to, I have viewed this situation casually, and I have not looked at the exact numbers of the income and expense on the office building or other properties, but I have looked at many in the past, and I have looked at many low- and moderate-income housing projects, high-density, and the expense ratios that come along with that. If this property were to be re-improved to, or converted to multifamily or any portion thereof, that would require substantial change both in plumbing, wiring, and as well as escape safety features. Those costs would be very, very costly. You mentioned here access. The building does not have an elevator, so that would require the cost of at least $50,000 to put an elevator on that building, which wouldn't be economic. And if you add all the costs up to the existing present value of the property, you would find it's very uneconomic for it to be converted to a multifamily residence, in my opinion. I'm not going to attest to numbers because I haven't reviewed the details, but the concern of the residence of this possible use occurring in my professional consideration is remote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Any further comment from the public? Come right on up.
My name is Susan Neber, and I live at 17882 Bishop Circle, and I'm right behind Villa Park High School, and my bedrooms look out at the building. I see the building, and the building can see me, but at night, I don't get bothered by it, and there's no noise, so I don't mind the building. But if you put housing in there, it's not going to be very private anymore, and I feel that myself And I feel that myself and my neighbor, who is even hurt worse by it, because she'll be, they'll be able to see everything in her house, were that close. It just, it just wouldn't be right. I mean, when we bought the house, we got it because of the privacy and because it was a wonderful place here. But if it changes and they put that in, it's not going to be a wonderful place anymore. It's crowded enough on the streets here. What will it be if they put affordable housing in there? We can barely get out of, Bishop Circle is the only street that we can go out, to get out of our neighborhood, both Bishop Circle and the streets on the other side, the only place. We can barely get out now because of the schools and all the traffic. And now, since Dunkin' Donuts went in, there's even more traffic, which I don't mind. I mean, it's nice to have Dunkin' Donuts there, but I don't know what we could do to stop this. Isn't there any other place? What about the nursery down the street? It's on the street. It wouldn't even affect any neighbors, the property on the nursery. Why don't they look at that down there on Santiago? I mean, it will lower our property values, definitely. And if it hurts us in our section, what is it going to do to the rest of the city? Because the city was always supposed to be, what, right, one-half acre? You can't go lower than that. I mean, this is a teeny little city, and Fullerton, basically, is a big city. And Orange, all around us, we have affordable housing all around us here in Orange. So I'd really like you to consider finding another way or making it so difficult for them they can't do it. Thank you very much.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to ask a question. What are the odds, this is passed, that this will actually happen? You're in Vegas.
I don't like Vegas.
I know, I'm not crazy about it either. I like the shows, that's it.
Todd, I'm going to repeat what I said earlier, just to make sure we clarify. We changed this back in 2013.
Right.
So in 2013, up till now, the owners, as well as we, if we wanted to, we could have come to the city and built affordable housing, which is so far outrageous, it's not even a thought. But in 2013, we did that. It would have required a CUP. Now, I know that the building next door has been sold since 2013.
Yes.
I might be off a little bit. I don't know whether or not that was, the building was sold before or after we enacted the CUP or not.
After.
It was after. So it's, it's already been in place. I don't honestly believe that the owner would put affordable housing in there at this time because it is cost-prohibitive, and quite frankly, it's not the place to put it.
Well, I know they're doing a costly facelift, that building, very soon.
Well, that it does need.
So that would be kind of, I'm just wondering what the odds are.
Just wanted to let, you know, they could have done it already, come to us, and they have not, so...
I think Wayne Silzell addressed your concern.
I mean, so there'd be economic considerations, right? We're saying it's allowed as a matter of right now. You don't have to come to the city to obtain a conditional approval, but it still has to comply with all the updated building and fire codes, ADA requirements, everything, particularly for residential units. Those can be quite economically substantial in cost. So if there is a housing provider who relies primarily on tax credit financing, and tax credit financing is basically going away since Trump got elected, because everybody thinks he's going to lower taxes so you don't get the delta, right? That whole model for residential construction is in the process of changing, which would militate more towards it happening less likely. But, I mean, it's allowed if this is approved within that area.
It can happen, but the odds are probably a lot less.
Right, and it still requires the property owner consent, wherever he or she be, yeah.
Curious, it's my livelihood over there.
No, understood.
Jared, I was wondering if our consultant could answer the latest question about why you wouldn't look at the nursery and what other alternatives did we consider?
Mayor and council, the requirement for the city to designate some property that meets these standards, that is a state requirement, and it's the prerogative of the city to identify what are the most appropriate locations to satisfy the requirement. So this process began with staff analysis, casting the net wide throughout the city. There was a meeting of the Community Development Subcommittee of the council to review various alternatives. And then after that meeting, there was a meeting of the full council several months ago, and discussion on what are the appropriate, what would be the appropriate location to satisfy the requirement. And so the decision that came out of the council at that last meeting was that this CP zone was the appropriate location. So that was the direction from the council that staff and I used in putting together the document to send to the state.
Okay, thank you.
We did look at the corner parcels on Meats in Santiago, and, I mean, on paper, it's an ideal location. What HCD and the state didn't like about that parcel is it was constrained by 200 feet of Southern California Edison right-of-way and easements. So the chances of getting approvals from Edison to build underneath that were slim to none.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any council discussion on this item? Is there a motion on this matter, then?
I'll move the staff recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 20163372, approving the 2013-2, 2021 housing element. Can I make my motion to address all?
You will, and then I'll read them into the record.
Okay, basically, to, so my motion is to approve the staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second. Jared, would you take the vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will read the resolution titles into the records as well as the ordinance. Resolution Number 20163372, Resolution, City Council, City Villa Park, adopting an addendum to initial study mitigated negative declaration number 10-107524, and general plan amendment 201601, an amendment to the City Villa Park housing element for the 2013-2021 planning period. Scroll to the next one. Resolution Number 20163373, Resolution, City Council, City Villa Park, adopting an addendum to initial study mitigated negative declaration number 10-107524, and general plan amendment 2016-01, an amendment to the City Villa Park general plan land use element. And the first reading of ordinance number 2016604, an ordinance of the City Council, City Villa Park, amending portions of Chapter 23 of the Villa Park Municipal Code related to the standards and procedures for the CP zone, transitional supportive housing, residential parking standards, and reasonable accommodation. Mayor Protam Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Councilman Fasenelli.
Yes.
Councilman Rossini.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
The motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. Now, we will consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion, approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public, may request an item be removed from consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you'd like to remove from the consent calendar?
No.
Well, I have one. I'd like to pull Number 21. So with that, have agenda item Number 21 pulled from the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the balance of the items?
I'll sort of move. Second.
Been moved in second. Jared, take a roll call vote.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protam Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Rossini.
Yes.
Councilman Fasenelli.
Yes.
Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
I'll pull Item 21, which is a schedule for 2017 for council meeting. One issue is, I think, on April 26th, is a Wednesday rather than a Tuesday, so I'd like to make that a correction.
Yeah, unfortunately, we left the 2016 date in there, so it will be the 25th. Sorry.
The second one, on September 26th, I believe, is one. I have a conflict, and I was wondering if the council would approve a change of that date to something like the 19th of September.
Is that, are you moving that?
Yes, I'll move that we approve this with those changes.
Second.
Motion is to approve the 2017 calendar with the change of April 26th to April 25th, the day before, and then September 26th to September 19th.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Councilman Rossini.
Yes.
Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Councilman Fasenelli.
No.
Mayor Protam Colacott.
Yes.
The motion carries, 4 to 1.
Can we, we, since this, that date was changed, I noticed that we've got the holiday months a little bit different than normal. Am I right? If you're looking at typically, in the history of Villa Park, we've had our council meeting on November prior to, let's see, we've got it prior to Thanksgiving, so it would be on November 14th, not November 28th.
You're, I mean, there's no rhyme or reason for this, we just avoid the holiday.
Well, who picked, who picked, we changed the dates, is what I'm asking. Typically, it's always been before, so now we've got it after. Is there a reason for that?
Is the 28th the normal fourth Tuesday?
28th is the normal fourth Tuesday.
Normal fourth Tuesday.
So, okay, all right, and then, but typically, so did you, I just wanted to know, did we change something? Because I looked at the calendar, want to make sure what we're doing. When is December this year? When is the staff off for the following year?
That hasn't been set. Traditionally, holidays for December are set with the Personnel and Salary and Benefits Resolution, which is adopted in line with budget. So that'll be discussed, for 2017, that will be discussed in June.
So, so we don't run into the problem that we had this time, in December 19th, being our normal council meeting, we would have the reorganization at the same time, or would it be the week ahead?
It's at the same time. We generally hold reorganization meetings with the installation of the new officers. However, this year, with the election and the presidential election, it took the county registrar's voters' office the full 30 days to canvass the results, which is why we had to cancel our December 6th.
So we'll only have one in December next?
Next year, there's no election, so you only have the one meeting. Unless there is a special meeting called, depending on what you determine. So, yeah, in November, I mean, nothing changed. The fourth Tuesday doesn't really conflict with Thanksgiving, it's after, so we decided to leave it. It's council's program, so you can move to the 14th if you like.
That's fine, just wanted to ask why it had changed.
Next is new business. Our first item on new business, city manager's appointment and employment contract for Jessica Bingquist. Council having a discussion on this item?
I have one bit that I'd like to bring up. In the contract here, I noticed that, God forbid, there's a severance issue. There's a 12-month, in effect, buyout. I have concerns about such a lengthy period of time. I appreciate the time that the Human Resources Committee has spent on this matter, and the opportunity to meet Ms. Bingquist or Mrs. Bingquist. And I've expressed my views about this matter, but with respect to this one aspect, I would like that to be changed. I'd like to make a motion for that.
Well, this decision to, one of this negotiating factor, having one year of a severance, is something Jared currently has that in his contract, as well as other city managers have had that. There is, I'm not sure if it's necessarily a law, but there is a responsibility when someone takes a position of being city manager, that they're required to be at that place of employment for two years. And that's a code of ethics that they take for being a city manager. And that's the reason, one of the reasons for the 12-month severance at that point. Because no matter what, when they come in, the majority of the time, they're going to be here at least two years. If we do let them go earlier, it would be difficult for, you know, for them to certainly find a job, unless, of course, they had done something wrong. So we gave her the parameters that Jared had, certainly with the approval of the council at the time.
So did you make a motion to approve the contract?
I did.
Wait, wait.
Well, I...
We have to follow the comment.
Any comment?
Did you have a comment, Bob?
Yeah, I have a comment, too. You know, I'm concerned about the termination, or, excuse me, the, right now, what we have is a requirement that if we hire, once we hire a new city manager, that we would have to, if we, any time that we let that person go, we have to make, as Vince pointed out, a one-year severance. I think that it would be prudent in the best interest of our city to require a probation period of six months. We've all met Ms. Bingquist and feel that she would be a good candidate, but out of prudence in protection of our city, I think that we should provide for a probation period of six months as part of the contract. So I would move that we make the off...
Could we, could we have public comments before we, before we make a motion? We're just having discussion now. I want to know if there's anyone from the public that would like to make comments on this issue? Okay.
Tim Cronin, 9662 Featherhill Drive. In the private sector, there's usually a probation period. I would think that it makes sense for the council to consider some kind of probation period. A year's severance for one year seems excessive to me, too, so I would just ask you to consider that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, I have further discussion here. This process for hiring a city manager is quite lengthy and quite detailed. We spent, I would say, in excess of 30 hours, in not just interviewing, but in researching and in the council meeting to negotiate it. Being the small city that we are, we're the lowest-paid city, we don't get people coming from Mission Viejo, being city managers, wanting to be our city manager. So what we do get is we get up-and-rising individuals who come. This particular individual who is coming to us has been with the same city for 10 years, and then prior to that, another city for 10 years. She's also going to be one of the lowest-paid city managers in Orange County. But just because we're a small city and we can't afford to pay very much, the work is still the same, the requirements are still the same, the documents are still the same, the filings are still the same. We just have a small city with smaller budgets. So to have somebody come from an establishment where they've been there 10 years, has a great track record, and has an oath to stay here at least two years, we have to give them some sort of security because it'll take some time to find a job. It's a very big position. So we didn't offer the two-year severance, we didn't offer 50, we offered exactly what we've given to Jared, what we've given to other city managers. Now, other city managers get a car, fully paid for, they get their telephone fully paid for, they get more vacation fully paid for, and they get more pay. So there are other areas in which we have been able to cut because she doesn't require a car. She also doesn't require, you know, to have her own cellphone, we're giving her $50. So there are other areas in which we were able to cut. So with the research that the Human Resources did and the prior council, I believe the one-year severance is applicable to her contract, and it certainly was something that she accepted, if this council accepts the contract.
So I have a question. Is this, is this contract consistent, I heard Jared, his contract, but is it consistent with several of our past city managers? Were there a lot of changes made to this as a result of something different? Is this consistent?
Let me speak to that. It's generally consistent, yes.
Okay.
As far as severance and items of those nature. And let me, let me just clarify something, I think, to Councilman Rossini's point. The term of, the concept of a probation period, that's sort of a concept in labor law, that's not applicable here because this is a contract person. But I think what was mentioned, or maybe it was Bob's, I apologize, was, I think you were saying, before the severance kicks in, that there would be that.
Yes.
I think that's what you were talking about, okay. Industry-wide, for city managers, because city manager, at the end of the day, is responsible to a council, and councils change, it's at the political whim of new councils, as it were. It is standard in the industry for there to be a severance provision of this length. Under state law, the longest severance that...
Under state law, the longest severance that you can give is 18 months. This is less than that. Also, once the term of the contract gets less than 12 months, the severance correspondingly goes down, and that's required by state law. So you can't do the term of your contract, quit the day before, and then get 12 more months. So I'm not giving up, right? That would be brilliant if you could, right? If you're the employee, but you can't. So just from standard in the industry, not saying right or wrong, it's typical, this is a typical city manager contract.
Okay.
There is one difference. Jared does not have a vehicle, where the prior, our prior city managers, at least the prior two, did have a vehicle, paid for the city. But the city did have one, and we sold it when Jared came onboard. He didn't want it.
Okay, well, I guess my view is that Villa Park is quite unique, and I think that's one of the things we really like about our city, is that it's very different. When the people that founded this, this city back in 1962, they wanted to have as little government as possible. So we don't have, our city manager does not have department heads reporting to him that supervise, let's say, parks and recreation departments, or water departments, or public works departments, or, you know, planning departments. We have a very small staff, we contract most everything out, we're very different than other cities. Hence, you know, it, and we're also very small. So I think that warrants changes. One of the changes we have is a lower salary and lower other compensation. And, you know, certainly, you know, we've, we went through a relatively abbreviated recruitment process. I think it gives it, this will give us some time, and also the candidate some time to, you know, check out Villa Park, and, you know, hopefully, things will work out well. We're looking forward to that, and we'll do everything we can to make it work. But I think that a probation period is warranted in this case, and I agree with Mr. Rossini that, you know, length of, you know, for this, for this city, for a one-year severance pay is excessive, and that a six-month severance pay would be more appropriate. But again, that reflects that we're a very different city, very different than any other city in Orange County, and perhaps in Southern California. Which is why we're all here.
I guess, I guess my other question would be, why isn't this issue raised in the past by, you know, when Jared took over and other things? If we, if we're consistent long-term with the terms and conditions that we've offered other city managers, why all of a sudden is this an issue? I guess. Maybe from a historical perspective, somebody could help me with that.
Number one, I'm new on council.
Okay.
Number two, being a public administrator, having a background in public administration, having a master's degree in public administration, having experience both in the public and private sector, I think it's important to obviously take a look at industry standards, as our city attorney and Human Resources Committee has looked at, but also look at ways that we can set the example, maybe lead the way. I don't think we're going to have the issue with Mrs. Bingquist, but God forbid something were to go wrong. I don't want the taxpayers to be on the hook for a year. I just don't think it's in the, in our best interest. And certainly, this city has challenges, and it's not easy to be the city manager here. There are, you have to do more with less, but we also don't have the same challenges that other cities do. We don't have redevelopment issues. In fact, redevelopment, in large part, is gone in California. We don't have a gang issue. We don't have a high degree of mixed use whatsoever. There are a lot of changes that, or challenges, excuse me, that other cities have that we do not have. We have a small commercial area, and we have a tremendous amount of residential issues to deal with. So not to diminish what the position entails, but let's take into consideration what we're talking about here. We have a candidate who does not possess a master's degree, that we are going to, in a sense, help pay for that education. In all likelihood, this will be a stepping stone in four years to another position. So I think the salary, as well as the benefits, are, should be commensurate with that, and in the end, our job is to protect our residents and the taxpayers.
Jared, one other question. Under what circumstances is this paid and not paid?
So if there is violations of law, or other types of moral turpitude, ever since the City of Bell situation, since you heard in the news, right? The state legislature required that there be specific provisions in governmental agency executive contracts. Those provisions from the government code are in here. So if there's any theft of money or other actions which are criminal, then there's no severance.
Right.
And if we get sued for something that was done, you know, underhandedly, they have to give the severance back after the fact, if they've already gotten it. So those provisions are in here as required by law. Otherwise, if, you know, or if the individual voluntarily quits, there's no severance. It's only if the city terminates the individual.
So if the conditions change, and we, and, and the city decides at that point in time that we don't need a city manager, or something like that, we ask that person to leave, then we would be liable for a 12-month severance?
12 months, unless you're within the 12-month time period at the end, in which it would be shorter, yes.
I don't see this as an issue.
I want to make sure, Vince, it was not a requirement that our city man, that the city manager have a master's degree?
I'm well aware of that. It's just, it's part of the industry, it's a usual standard.
And it's not, and we, Jared, did not have a master's, and once again, we assisted, which is what companies do, and what cities do, and they do have programs, and Jared now does have that. This city is, is a small city. It's a stepping stone. You're not going to have anyone stay here 10 years. If someone stays here five years, that is absolutely wonderful. Jared gave us 10. He was young when he came here. This particular individual has been at her city's 10 years twice. So, which is a great thing. And again, most city managers would get a vehicle, we would be paying for their insurance. This is not something that she's given. She did, we did negotiate, and there was more personal time that was wanted from her, and she negotiated that down also. So there were some other items, and they would give or take. The council had given the Human Resources a full budget, and we went within that budget, in which she did accept at that point, so.
I appreciate your comments.
Hi, my name's Leanna Cronin, and I guess my questions to you are just a response into your question, Mr. Pitts, earlier. Why is this a concern now? Just because it wasn't in the past? Things change, times change, budgets change. We are a different city. We're a very small city. I think six months is more than fair. In the private sector, you don't get anything close to that. This is, nobody's forcing anybody to do any of these jobs. People come here willingly to do it, they know their income, what they're going to get. You guys all here serve freely, and there's no compensation, and we appreciate that, but no one forces anybody to do anything. If you want to accept the job, this is what you're going to get paid. You're not going to get a car, you're not going to get a phone, you're not going to get this or that, and you have the option to either take that position or not to. And I think six months is more than fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one issue with the contract. You probably know that I don't like Evergreen contracts. And it's an Evergreen contract. I would prefer a contract with a specific end date, so that it comes up for renewal on a periodic basis, and not just goes on and on because you don't do anything. It has a provision in there where you give a six-months notice. If you don't get a six-months notice, it automatically rolls over to an additional year. And I'm assuming if you don't give another notice, it rolls over for another year.
It's just for that one year, but point understood, yes.
You know, I didn't, I lost on the one on, on your contract. Yeah, but that's just my-
Is public comment closed? Oh, a second, are we?
Discretion of the mayor.
Well, is any, any additional public comment? I thought there were none. There's none. So we have a discussion here now. That was, that was my one issue.
That can easily be taken out.
Yeah.
So can I make a motion? Or, I, yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the contract with the Evergreen change.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a moment. Yes, Robert?
I said I move that we accept the contract, as written, with the exception of the Evergreen portion of it. Have it rewritten by the, by the city attorney.
And just to clarify for the record, that's in section three, the second paragraph, section two, second paragraph. What would be cut out is a clause, if city desires to not renew or not extend the term of the agreement that shall give Bingquist written notice thereof at least six months prior to the expiration of the agreement. If city does not give such notice, the term of the agreement shall automatically extend for an additional one-year time period.
Okay.
Well, we have motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
The motion is to accept this with the Evergreen, without the Evergreen contract?
With or without.
The motion was to move approval of the agreement with that section I just read, which gave an additional year if we didn't give notice, removed. Correct.
And at that point, we'd make, we would show, make sure she knows that, to give her the, give her the opportunity, whether or not she may not, she may not accept it at that point.
Sure. I mean, contract then would have a firm end date, and before the end of the contract, the parties, I assume, would come together to see if they wanted to extend the contract past that date. It's basically just a mechanism of not having to go through the rigmarole of having a new city manager contract unless the parties want to, hence the notice provision. But, I mean, there are policy reasons, obviously, for not having it, so.
Then I second that motion.
I'd like to enter a substitute motion, that we approve the contract with amendments, the amendments for a probation period of six months, reduction of severance, and the Evergreen provision, as was described by council.
I'd like to second that.
Been moved and second. Jared, can we have a roll call vote?
Second one, taking some notes, if you don't mind. Okay, so the motion, substitute motion on the floor to act on right now, is to accept the contract with a probation period of six months before the severance kicks in, reduction of the severance from 12 months to six months, and the deletion of the Evergreen clause. Mayor Protem Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Rossini.
Yes.
Councilman Pitts.
No.
Councilwoman Fasenelli. Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
The motion carries three to two. So now, this is all subject to the other party agreeing to the contract changes. If they aren't agreeable, then obviously, there's no contract.
It's just an offer.
Sorry, talking as a chairman here of the Human Resource, I find this extremely disappointing, Mayor Nelson, that these items were never brought up by you during our hours and hours of this. And, you know, I think that, I hope she takes it, but if she doesn't, it'll be detrimental to the city to change terms from our human resource recommendations to the council and to the new council. I mean, we don't come to this dais with a contract for a new city manager without having some agreement, and a good agreement, from the council, which is why we spent many hours. So I certainly hope she takes it. If she doesn't, then I guess that we'll have to contract out for our city manager a little bit longer.
Well, Councilwoman Fasenelli, when you asked-
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Fasenelli.
I've been called Councilwoman now four times tonight, and I've been called Diana. So my name is Deanna, and it always has been. Thank you.
Well, in any case, as you are fully aware of, I was against the previous council hiring the city manager. I thought it should have waited to the new council. As you're fully aware of, you know, both Bob and I voted against extending this offer. I think it's a concession that we are willing to approve it with some changes to it. Because we really shouldn't have approved it at all, because we asked you guys to please wait till the new council came in to do this contract, and you went right ahead and did it anyway, without, you know, without our agreement on it.
Well, actually, what your words were, you know what? I'm going to vote no, but she's my choice. But I'm voting no, because I want the two new council members to have a say in it. That is exactly what you said in your vote, because it was four to one. And then you said, I'm not going to vote for it, because I want the new council people.
Let's just, I apologize, Councilwoman. Let's just make sure we don't talk about anything. Close session.
Okay. All right. Can we move on?
One other comment, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned about the process, if she does not take it, and us being able to find a competent city manager throughout this process, because we've gone through, I'm assuming, a multitude of interviews. You know, I know, we put her through a lot with the multiple interviews with you all, as well as with Vince and I, after the fact. So I'm just concerned about making changes at the last minute and losing what I think to be a great candidate for this, for the city of Villa Park. I just call record as saying that.
Okay, thank you. Our next item of business is storm drain master plan update. Any discussion on this item?
If I could jump in here real quick, this is just a brief update regarding the storm drain master plan. We went out to, actually, went out to bid last year for an RFP on this, and November 17th, the city council awarded the contract to CNC Engineering. We were hoping to have the project completed in September, but the data and the research and the methodology to collect all of our infrastructure took the consultant a little bit longer than expected. Our initial 1997 master plan, which is the last time we reviewed this, was subpar at best, I'm told. So it took them a little bit longer, and they had to actually manually input all of the drainage and the maps, and it's, and pardon me, I don't know the nomenclature, but they had to recreate the map that's actually included in your, in your staff report. So we are behind schedule a little bit. We are now expecting to get a final draft in January, February, which will come before the city council, but before then in January, we asked for some cost estimates of what it's looking like out there. Are we deficient in areas? If so, how much is that going to cost us, so we can get to work for budgeting for next year? We have about $150,000 set aside in our storm drain budget this year. That could always be carried over into the next, but the, the report prepared by the consultant just provides a brief, a brief update, and outlines our new project schedule for you.
Yes, Bob?
If I could respond to some of what the consultant said, when we first went into this process, we were not aware that we even had the 1997 map or plan. So for them to say that, well, gee, the previous report was deficient, well, we didn't even know we had that. So they provided us with a schedule and a cost and a scope, assuming that they were going to be doing this from scratch. We need to get this, we need this information regarding the status of our storm drain system very quickly, because we need it for our budget for next year, so we can budget correction of any, you know, repairs, any repairs that are needed to the system, and any other modifications that are needed to the system, so that they, we can protect our residents from flooding. And, you know, and certainly, if they're, if they find any potential failures, we need to correct those before they occur. So I'd like our interim city manager to place that this is a very high priority, working with the consultant, to expedite the schedule to get us completion of this report, so that we can have time to consider the report, and fully consider it in our budget process going into next year. So please help us with that.
Any public comment on this item? If not, do I hear a motion to, the staff recommendation is to receive and file?
So moved?
Second.
Moved and second. Jared?
Voice vote, receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Hearing none, motion carries.
Next, we would discuss adopting resolution number 2016-3372, appointed city designated representative to the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors. Is any council discussion on this item?
Why are we doing this at this meeting? In the past, we've always had the mayor review all the committee assignments and come back in January for all of them, if something happened?
OCFA has a weird rule, where you got to do a reso by a certain date. It's different. It's how the calendar fell, unfortunately, this year. And I should state, for the record, there is, there was a kerfuffle a couple of years ago in front of the FPPC. This, this position does have a stipend, so the amount of the stipend is listed on the city's website- website so everybody knows what a person gets paid for this in compliance with that FPPC rule.
Yeah.
Any public comment on this issue? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
What's the motion?
Recommendation for?
Well, I think Rick Barnett led the charge, has led the charge for the past four years or so on this item, and it's been a very difficult and complex issue requiring a lot of, particularly the unfunded pension liability issue is significant. And I think we'd be best represented by our mayor on the fire authority, and I'd like to nominate Bill.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion, yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I would be happy to second, given your extensive financial background.
Roll call vote, Jared?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to adopt resolution number 2016-33, sorry, it's not 72, that was, we have two resolution numbers, so I'll redo that. 3372 was our housing element, excuse me. Motion is to adopt the resolution, appointing its director, Bill Nelson, to the Orange County Fire Authority Board. Mayor Protem Colacott.
Yes.
Councilman Rossini.
Yes.
Councilman Pitts.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli.
No.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
My apologies, Bill. It doesn't sound like a fun assignment.
Okay. Now's the time to hear individual council members' information items. Starting with Councilwoman Fasenelli.
I have none.
Councilman Pitts?
Just a thank you to Jared for all of your service, everything that you've done for this city. Appreciate your tenure here, your help, and a lot of advice from me when I started running for city council. So thank you for everything. We really appreciate you and look forward to hearing good things about you going forward.
Councilman Rossini?
Again, I'd like to thank Jared. Extremely helpful with the LIAC, with questions about the campaign, with this current position, his role in the community, his obvious desire to do what's right in the community. Also like to thank Greg and Rick for their volunteer actions for our community. And I'd like to thank my family for putting up with me for the last six to nine months of going through this. And I'd like to extend my gratitude and thanks to each member of the current council for their support, and congratulations. Thank you.
Councilman Colacott?
Well, I think all of us here participated on the Santa tour over the weekend, I guess it was on Saturday, and it was, as Robbie pointed out, it was a wonderful event. This was my third year doing this, and I view that as my primary compensation for being on the city council. It's a blast. And I have fond memories of being one of the people on Moro Circle, waiting and being surprised to find Santa there and bringing my three-year-old daughter out to the street. And I actually have a photo of me and my daughter in 1985, when probably Wayne Silzell and Bob Bell were on city council. Anyway, the Santa tour was very successful. I think there were a lot more kids there this year. I think, you know, and a lot of spirit, and I'm looking forward already to doing it again next year. Again, the boat parade was a great success, you know, thanks to the Community Services Foundation for putting both these events on. Like to wish everybody Merry Christmas. Congratulations to our new mayor, and look forward to working with you and supporting you and the rest of the council in helping to keep Villa Park just like it is, only let's polish it up a little bit, make it better, make it better the way we can.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for those reports. And before I close, I'd like to schedule a special meeting next week to approve the committee assignments for next year. What would be appropriate date for all of you? That would.
Next week is Christmas week. Why would we do that? We would have had our council meeting next week. That's why we don't have meetings that week.
Mr. Mayor, I'm also out of town next week. I have to travel on business. I apologize, but duty calls. If we could rearrange it another time, I'd appreciate it so I could be a part of it.
Yeah, historically, the city hasn't had a meeting for Christmas week. That's why we've kind of changed it.
Last year, we met on the 21st.
One?
Mayor Mills, yeah, Mayor Mills called a special meeting for committee assignments.
We did.
Okay. I don't think it's much going to matter because I do believe the committee assignments have already kind of been predetermined because I've spoken to board members from sanitation and Bob has indicated where he's going to be. I know that you were putting yourself in on fire authority because you didn't ask, Jared didn't come and ask any of the council if anyone wanted to be on fire authority. So quite frankly, we can have the meeting. It won't matter whether or not I'm there or whether or not Robbie's there or not because I believe the three of you have already have it all determined over there, so.
I want to make it clear that three of us have not determined anything. It's not appropriate under Brown Act for the three of us to determine anything. So let's make that clear.
Just keep.
I'd sure like to know what committees I'm on if that's the case.
Good.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So generally, if it's a special meeting for committee assignments, those last well under an hour, if a special meeting is called tonight, I will shoot out blank committee assignment form tomorrow. You all designate your preferences. I'll return those forms to the mayor, and when the agenda is posted, those will be included. So when the mayor comes out with his assignments, we will see what everybody's preferences are.
And I will say, Mayor, and for Councilman Pitts, there is a provision under the Brown Act, which is the rules that governs our meetings, that you can call in for telephonic meetings and participate that way. Now, the drawback is, is you have to post a notice, which Jared would put together if you're in a hotel room. You have to put it on the door in your hotel room, and anybody from the public can come in to your hotel room because your space is now a public space. So with that, that is an option.
Well, he could sit in the lobby and put up a poster and.
Yeah, that's even better, so.
The school board does that option.
It's called telephonic meeting.
We had the same meeting last year on December 21st. The meeting lasted approximately 10 minutes, if that long. It's just come back to make the recommendation for committee assignments. And what you do, you put in your recommendations, and I come back with my recommendations to the council.
Okay.
So now what would be.
Jared, can we have that meeting recorded? It could be, it could just be, it doesn't need to be televised, but.
Certainly, audio recorded the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So it can be put on through the website for that.
So what would be appropriate date for you guys?
21st.
What's Tuesday?
When are you going to be on the ground, Robbie?
Tuesday is 21.
19 through the 22nd. Unfortunately, I have to.
But will you be on the, when would you be on the ground and able to participate in a short conference call?
Well, flying up Monday morning and coming back Thursday night.
Okay, so on Tuesday or Wednesday, what time would you, could you make yourself available?
It would have to be after 6 o'clock at night, that's the only problem.
6 o'clock, you're going to be back east, it'll be after 3 o'clock.
No, no, I'm here. I'm on the West Coast. I'm going to Northern California for business.
It's not mandatory that you call in as well, in case that's an issue, so.
Okay.
So what about the 20th at 6:30?
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
I'm fine with that.
Mayor, I have your limited council meeting that night, but I don't think you need me for that.
No.
Or ever, but yes.
Bill, I mean, Bill, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Is there any particular reason for the rush, so to speak, maybe? Could we wait maybe until after Christmas and have the get-together if it's a short meeting so that I could, in fact, be here to be with you?
We could do that.
One suggestion as well, since you'd be paying the interim city manager hourly, perhaps you'd want to schedule it, and it will be a brief 20-minute meeting during his office hours to avoid a 6:30 PM meeting for a.
Ron, Robbie was asking if we could put it off till next, till next month, and we could. We can have one before the next council meeting, sure.
Yes, that'd be great if we could.
That would work for me.
For the first or second week of January, absolutely.
I'm fine with that.
I'll send out the blank committee forms tomorrow as well, just so you have. And then we'll task the interim city manager with finding a date.
Okay, and, yeah, we do have some regularly scheduled committees like community development and LIAC and investment advisory, and if we could get, do it before, the assignments before those meetings. I don't know when the sanitation district is meeting.
Yeah, that's tough. We'll have to, we'll be.
Sector control.
We'll miss a few, I believe. LIAC is generally the first Monday, but I believe when they recess, they recessed until January 11th, which is a Wednesday. CDC is the first Monday, but we are on holiday for Monday, January 2nd. We can work around it.
Okay, and.
What about the 3rd of January?
Tuesday, 3rd?
Yeah.
I'm good.
That would make it effective for all of them during the month of January.
Be available there?
I'm agreeable.
That's fine with me.
That's fine.
Okay.
Is there generally a time?
He's the guy that we have to talk to, I guess. What time on the 3rd would you be available for a meeting?
Whenever I really have.
Okay.
Well, let's hope by January 3rd, Jessica's already said, yes.
You're not available January 3rd?
I am.
Oh, okay. So what time? What time is best for you guys?
Does it need to be during the day?
Can we do it during the day?
It can be in the evening.
I'd like sometime after 3:30 would be fine.
After 3:30?
That's fine.
4 o'clock?
Sounds good.
On the 3rd?
Yep.
Okay, we got it. Clock on the 3rd.
1:03 at 4:00 PM.
Jared, are you sending out a calendar request or something? Okay, thank you.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn to not the regular meeting, but a special meeting on January, January 3rd, 2017?
Also move?
Second.
Do we vote on it?
Voice vote to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.